Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the May 4th Post Falls City Council meeting, May 4th, 2021. Shannon, please note that all council members are present. And we have no announcements tonight. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict, direct partake communication? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the April 20th, 2021 city council meeting. Item B is payables, April 13th through April 26th, 2021. Item C is frontage improvement waiver request for 609 West 14th Avenue. Item D is the disposal of a 2003 micro mower by the Parks Department. Item E is disposal of a 2007 Ford Escape by the Building Department. Item F is disposal of a 2007 Ford F-150 by the Wastewater Department. Item G is disposal of a 2009 Tiger Truck by the Parks Department. Item H is disposal of a 1993 Ford L-9000 by the Streets Department. Item I is disposal of a 2002 tenant sweeper by the Parks Department. And item J is disposal of a 2008 Rico Copier by the Parks Department.
Question, Steve has one.
Yeah, I just, it was under payables. We have a payment of $257,081 to Northwest Waste and Recycling.
That's our, that is our sanitation contractor.
Oh, that is, okay, it's, instead of, well, that's, he's got under a different name than the.
Yes, so he's got a corporate name and then he has a DBA, which is Post Falls Sanitation.
Okay, thank you.
And Cordillane Garbage is his other name, yes.
Al? Question on all these vehicles that we're getting rid of and we're going to get something for them, hopefully. Does that money that we get from the auction, does that go back to fleets or does that go back to?
Goes back to the replacement funds.
Okay, thank you. Carrie?
I was just going to clarify that the, if someone were just looking at the agenda and it says disposal of, they're actually being auctioned.
Yes, and the legal term that we have to use is disposal, but you're correct.
When I first read this, I had the vision of just driving them off a cliff someplace.
Yeah.
I'm not volunteer to drive.
Well, I'd make a motion.
Over the falls.
I'd make a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Push passes, thank you. Tonight, we do have two public hearings. First is the adoption of capital improvement plan and development impact fee report. That'll open the public hearing. Mr. Melvin.
Mayor, City Council, I'm going to provide a very brief introduction, then I will turn it over to our consultant, who has worked on the development of our impact fees for us. With the help of our consultants, Tishler Bice, the city's been working on updating our impact fees for the past several years. They have been delayed for a while as we were trying to adjust to current means of providing public outreach and social, with the social distancing standards that we've had. So it's taken us a little while, but with our goals to be really clear and transparent through the process, we wanted to make sure we were doing that. So as we've adapted and have figured out how best to do public outreach in the current environment, that is what was one of the things that has taken us a while. In our goals to be clear and transparent, we've had public open house forums, we've done substantial public outreach, we've had presentations to the North Idaho Building Contractors Association, and we held a specific developers' forums to get feedback and input on development impact fees. Impact fees are one-time fees paid for at the time of building permit to assist with growth, paying for its impact on certain city improvements. They're based on a philosophy of growth paying its own way, paying its share of their impact on the system. Previously, the impact fee categories that we had were public safety, parks, and transportation or streets. We've added a new impact fee category, multimodal. There's some other modifications in methodology that are not all-inclusive in this list. Julie will be covering those this evening. Elimination of the bedroom counts for the residential. Previously, impact fees were based on the number of bedroom counts. That became difficult with negotiations. Sometimes we just found it super to process, is it a single-family resident or not? We changed the transportation calculations from a combination of trips and vehicles miles traveled. That makes it easier for us to manage. It also makes it easier for us, if we have something that's a little unusual, we can go to a national standard trip generation manual and say, here's the trips that this has generated, there's a cost per trip. So it's just much easier for us to manage. It also makes it easier for, if we had a change of our transportation CIP midstream between our updates, it'll make, makes it easier for staff to come in and just do those adjustments with there. And then another thing you'll see is the addition of the level-two parks or passive parks. It's, it's an addition or actually it's a reintroduction of those. The original impact fees had those within there, and those are being reintroduced. You'll hear of that this evening as well. The goal this evening is to seek adoption of the capital improvement plan and development impact fee report by Tishler Bice, with the specific date, March 19th, 2021, and the associated fees contained within those. Additionally, this evening, separate from the public hearing, there's an ordinance that Warren Wilson has this evening for the actual adoption of the fees and associated with that. With that, I will turn it over to Julie, Julie here. So let me see if we can't. And Julie, I think it's yours. This Julie Herlins with Tishler Bice.
Thank you, thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you, Ms. Mayor Melvin. I do have a presentation, and so I plan to share my screen if that is okay.
Not for city. We don't need to set the timer for city presentation.
Good, thanks, Julie, go ahead.
Okay, everybody can see that, and I can see it too, great. Okay, so I will be walking through the overview of the study as well as the findings and happy to take questions as we, as we go along. The overview for the presentation, I'll give a little bit of background again, just to reiterate what Bill had mentioned about what impact fees are, what they're not, go through the levels of service, the capital improvement needs due to growth, the draft impact fee amounts for each of the categories included in the study, and then leave some time, obviously, for our questions and discussion. So an impact fee, as Mr. Melvin mentioned, it is a one-time fee paid at the time of building permit. It is, while it raises revenue due to the collection of the dollars through the payment of the fee, it is not technically a revenue-raising mechanism, but a regulatory tool to meet growth, growth-related infrastructure needs. This is one of the requirements of impact fees, that it satisfies, that it provides needed infrastructure to serve growth. It reflects new developments, new growth's proportionate share of those systems, of those system costs. That's the need why a study is required to identify what that proportionate share is. And ultimately, the fee payers should receive a benefit from the payment of a fee, and that then takes the form of those fees being kept in a separate account for use for those, the infrastructure for which it's collected, that it is spent within a timely manner, and that there are potential, as part of the study, looking at service areas for which the fees are collected and spent, typically for cities and the types of infrastructure improvements that are included in an impact fee study. They typically are system-level improvements and therefore have a larger service area, a benefit area. The general process for the study, for the determining methodologies and calculating the fees themselves, as Bill mentioned, we've been at this for a little while, COVID kind of threw a wrench in the middle of the process, but typically, but we have, we have kept with this process with data collection, interviewing key staff. We have been, the city has had fees in place for quite a long time. We have conducted the studies over the years, so it's a matter of both updating and really revisiting all of the assumptions on which the previous set of fees have been based. We look at projections of growth, look through all of the infrastructure categories included in this study to determine existing levels of service and project capital needs. Again, this is the capital improvement plan due to growth. Look at different methodological alternatives where necessary, include a calculation of credits, so we avoid double payment by folks that are paying the fee and potentially paying other general fund dollars that would be used for the same types of infrastructure. Then finalizing those capital improvement plans, conducting a cash flow analysis, ultimately calculating the maximum supportable impact fee, that's supported, again, by the study. Provide a written study, provide the written study in draft form with modifications, and then present to the public in various iterations. As Bill mentioned, there have been developer forums as well as presentations to the Planning Commission, and then ultimately, that brings us here to city council today. Typically, three different approaches in looking at calculation of impact fees, and just to kind of, as a 30,000-foot review of this, is kind of looking at past expenditures, where facilities are oversized, where there may be existing infrastructure that new growth is going to benefit from. This is typically done for utilities or potentially, it's typically done in utilities when you think about building a larger facility of which there is excess capacity in that system improvement. An incremental expansion, which is a pretty common approach and used, pretty, used in our study as well, that looks at what is the current level of service provided in infrastructure today, and what does it cost then to continue to provide that same level of service to, from, by growth, by growth continuing to provide that, paying to provide that same level of service. And then a plan-based approach is looking at known plans, typical and common and used here in, for transportation improvements, where those plans are in place, sort of a future, a future-looking approach, where those plans are in place through other planning studies, and those projects will be, are planned to be built to serve growth in the Looking at a snapshot of the categories included in the city's study, as well as kind of going through each of those methodologies I mentioned, and a service area question, as I also mentioned before. So parks and recreation, public safety, streets, and multimodal paths, those are the four main categories, a service area, again, a citywide service area, and then the components within each of those main categories, and the methodology for which, for which they were, they were, they were calculated, as well as the cost allocation. So some categories are assessed on residential development only and some on both residential and non-residential, and we'll go through this in a little more detail as we go through. But as I mentioned, incremental expansion is the most common methodology used, and this really does allow the city to continue to respond to growth, changes in land use. As the demand increases incrementally, fees will be collected to help to mitigate those impacts in exactly the method that an impact fee, or the manner in which an impact fee is meant to work. Bill also mentioned some of the changes to the, to the city's impact fee schedule from the preview, you know, from what is in place today. We have adjusted the residential fee to be purely by type of housing unit as opposed to the size of unit, which Bill mentioned. We've expanded the schedule of non-residential land uses, but again, we've also changed the methodology on the transportation impact fee to allow for some more flexibility, to allow some more flexibility to, for land uses that are not on the schedule but need to be assessed at building permit stage. We've also included that new, the new category of multimodal paths, which sort of expands the transportation infrastructure, and then includes both type-one and type-two parks. Part of the analysis, as I mentioned, establishes the, that the city is growing, identifies the level of growth. This is a snapshot in time of projected growth over 10- and 20-year period. Again, we have been, you know, our base year is a couple of years old now, however, the point is still, is made that there is a level of growth needed, where capital improvements are needed to accommodate that growth, again, over the 10- and 20-year period. So starting in on the first main, first umbrella category of parks and recs, there are, sorry, was there a question?
I don't see one.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I can only see, I only, I see, not seeing much. This is, you know, one of the downfalls of the remote presentation. But yeah, so if there is a question, as I go through, just holler in a, okay. The parks and recreation components, there are three. We mentioned level-one parks, level-two parks, and then indoor recreational facilities. And what you're seeing here is the snapshot of the current levels of service and the cost factors that are associated with each of those, each of those subcomponents, each of the components in the category of parks and recreation. And these are then the building blocks for the impact decalculations. But first, taking those levels of service and applying that to the amount of growth anticipated or projected over a 10-year period, what you see here is, the top portion of this slide is, again, the summary of levels of service, cost factors, and the middle part really is showing how much of this infrastructure at this projected growth would be, would be needed to maintain the city's current level of service and the cost associated with that. This is in current dollars, and as the city has done over the years, an annual, an annual inflationary factor based on a engineering news record or another similar construction cost index is recommended to keep up with inflationary factors on the, on the construction side. So today, in today's dollars, this would be the, would be about $30 million worth of parks' capital improvement needs due to growth in these components that are included in the impact fee.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Go ahead. I have a question. I know this study was done some time ago, I'm just wondering, you've got costs in there like $65,000 an acre, I'm not sure that that's still accurate. Did we make any adjustments for what we've seen in the last year and a half since we got these numbers?
Right. These costs are the, the original costs from our, from the analysis period, which was not, it was really 2019 and part of 2020, I would say, and these really are reflective of average costs for land that would be likely to be purchased, you know, for parks purposes, parks and recreation purposes. And I will, I will defer to others, you know, local, you know, other staff if there's other comments on those factors.
Thank you.
And so taking each of those, changing each of, or taking each of those components, the level of service factors that are then converted to a cost per, per person, which is then ultimately assigned to or multiplied by the household size by type of unit. Again, this is a land use regulation and meant to cover the costs generated from new housing, in this case, new housing development. And so each of those components added together with, I mentioned the credit, I mentioned the integration in the, the calculation of a credit to avoid for double payment. So in this case, we've done an analysis of funds from the general fund that have been historically spent on comparable capital, system-level capital improvements for, to expand capacity in the park system, unlike on other, not maintenance and routine, you know, those routine maintenance types, type costs. So that credit is embedded in this calculation to get to a bottom-line net cost per person that then again is, as I mentioned, multiplied by a household size to get to a maximum supportable fee for these parks components. So you'll see on this slide, in the green shaded column, this is the newly calculated maximum supportable proposed fee, so for a single-family home at $3,721. And for a point of information and comparison, we have included the city's current fees. The schedule was of July 2019, and the single-family fee does reflect the larger, the larger of the single-family categories in the current fee, which is a four-plus-bedroom unit as a, as a, again, by way of comparison. And then that last column shows the increase, in this case, it would be, increase or decrease, in this case, the increase off of the current fee. Moving on to the public safety components, within the public safety category, we have police stations, support facilities, which are general office space, wireless communication sites, and other communication facilities. These are allocated to both residential and non-residential development, based on the consumption and the demand for services from public safety services. And again, following the same, similar format of levels of service and the cost factors associated with each of, each of those, each of those components on the top part of this slide, then applying that to the 10-year increase in population and on non-residential development, and in this case, it's reflected in non-residential vehicle trips, which is the appropriate demand factor to capture the, the demand for public safety services from different types of non-residential development, looking, thinking about retail, having a different, different demand for services from both employees and visitors and customers, et cetera, along with office development, along with industrial and institutional uses that are embedded within that non-residential category. Looking at the projected growth there, what the capital improvement needs are out, that are due to growth, and it comes to just a little over $4 million, again, over a 10-year time period for those growth-related system-level capacity, capital improvements for public safety. Taking all of those together, allocating again, getting to a cost per person and a cost per non-residential trip, for, again, for each of those components, to, results in a maximum supportable draft fee for a single-family unit of $452, compared again to the, to the current fee, which is the largest size, the larger size of the single-family unit, and the, and the decrease in this case for this category. We do have here, unlike the parks and recs, this is also assessed, would be assessed on non-residential development. This is a, an excerpt from the full schedule. I mentioned earlier that we've expanded the schedule to include many more non-residential land use categories, but this is just an excerpt. The full, the full, the full list is in, the full schedule is in the report, but just for, for sake of space. And again, showing a, an addition of a hotel category in this case, but in other cases, we have the comparisons, comparisons again to the current fee schedule. Okay, moving on to the streets category, this is, as I mentioned, a plan-based approach, and so we have a, from the transportation master plan, a set of both short-term, medium-term, and long-term, long-range plans for capacity improvements, as well as an identification of current, current total costs, the city's share of those costs, and then other funding sources. The impact fee is based on the city's share of those, of those costs, and as shown here, and this is a 20-year program, and it's a little, it's about, about $37 million over the 20-year period, with an, with a bottom-line cost per trip of about $242, given the, the growth and the transportation growth on the network from, from trips, both from residential and non-residential demand. This translates then into a, a new, updated proposed fee for a single family, I'll just highlight again, the single-family, single-family unit of $1,510 per unit, which is comparable, slightly more than the current fee in place today, but comparable to the current fee. Again, an excerpt from, from the non-residential schedule for, for the sake of space, and an addition of that new hotel category. The, the final category, which is new, a newly added category, is for multimodal paths, and looking at both the, again, a similar, a similar approach here with a current level of service and the cost factor for both residential and non-residential development, and then a, an increase of projected capital improvement needs over the next 10 years for these, for these improvements of about $8 million. And we should note, and we have a note here on the slide, that these really, these reflect the system-level multimodal paths, they are not project-level improvements, like side, you know, sidewalks internal to a, to a project. And so the, the impact fee plan itself, the study, the document itself, does And so the, the impact fee plan itself, the study, the document itself does include a full list of those system-level projects that would be then eligible for, potentially eligible for credits if there was a comparable dedication made, dedication or construction made at the time of development for those projects that are identified. Again, these are, these are, these are, are system level, and I make that distinction between system level and project level, that really serving beyond the, the development for which, where, for which it's located. Using these cost factors, again, similar construction of the, the building blocks to get to the impact fee for a single family home, given those cost factors of about, of $869 per unit. This is a new fee, so this would be an increase. And again, the, the excerpt from the non-residential, the non-residential schedule. The bottom line, sum total for all of the fees we've discussed, and this is the full non-residential schedule that's included in the report. We have the four categories shown here, parks and recreation, public safety, streets, multimodal paths, for a total for a single family unit of $6,552. Compared to, and we'll just kind of, the comparison to the current schedule, this is the current fee schedule. The single family, again, is broken out into these two sized units, so the, the larger of the two at 43, at the current fee schedule, again, as of July 2019, $4,363.85. And comparing those two together, this reflects the difference between proposed and current. So each of the cells here is the difference between those two, those two fee, two fee amounts. So the, the increase here on the single family unit, $2,188, multifamily, an increase A couple of just quick points on some questions we've received along the way as we've been discussing this in public. I mentioned about multimodal paths and the, and the credit. So a credit, much as you, as the city has done to date, a payer would be eligible for a credit from an impact fee or reimbursement, creditor reimbursement when a system-level improvement is made, whether it's the improvement or land dedication, or something, or, you know, the improvement itself, construction of the improvement, or the land dedication, or the dedication of, of a constructed, a constructed improvement that fits the, what is identified as a, as the improvements in, in the study itself, so those system-level improvements. Project-level improvements, again, is required as part of a development approval process, would not be eligible for a credit. Again, that's internal to a, to a project itself, to a development itself. We had some questions also along the way on household sizes of multifamily units. And just for point of information, that, the data that utilized is average numbers of, of persons residing in the housing, a housing unit by type of unit. So this is specific to the city. It is from the U.S. Census, but it's tracked and updated annually. It's from the American Community Survey, but it's specific to the city of Post Falls. It is not a national average. It is, it is, again, for the city itself. And the results and the findings indicate that multifamily units in City of Post Falls, both City of Post Falls have fewer residents per unit on average for all units, you know, within the city. Obviously, there may be some that have more and some that have less, but on average, we are working in averages for the, for the, for those factors. That concludes the, the prepared presentation. Happy to take questions and hopefully have answers. So thank you very much for your time.
Counsel, any questions for Julie at this point? Steve, go ahead.
I just have one, Julie. On the multimodal pathways, so if the developer puts in pathways that connect different streets to each other, or does some connection himself, he would be able to receive a credit on just that one part then? On that, if it was not in the plan, not required by the city, but if he puts in extra pathways to connect other parks, then gets a credit on that?
So how we developed the multimodal portion is, we looked at a replacement-based methodology to determine the dollar amount of, that we would need to replace on a population basis.
Can we get you?
I'm sorry. Trying to determine a dollar amount that we were, a dollar amount of replacement that would need to be. We then took that dollar amount and looked at the multimodal CIP, the capital improvement plan, within our transportation plan, and prioritized projects within there. And that's, that capital improvement plan and list of projects is within this draft report. So, so the only way they would be eligible for a credit is if they were to construct one of those projects that are, that are specifically in that report. So anything else, you know, if they build a sidewalk or a multi-use trail within their facility, that's a development requirement that's within there. So it would only be those that are very specifically identified within there, Steve.
So just on page 30, where you have the list, those would be the only ones, if they completed one of those, then that they would get a credit for. And anything else would just be a benefit?
And anything else is just, yeah.
Okay. That clears it up for me.
Thank you.
Linda?
Bill, you can stay there for a second if you wouldn't mind. So on this list on page 30, are these in any kind of order? I mean, there, there are several, there are several pathways that need to be, or multimodal pathways that need to be built. In what order are they going to be built?
They're not in a list of priorities, so we would look, all of those are ones that are intended to be built over the term of the, of the current CIP. So as, as there's a demand, we would look at that multimodal CIP and say, okay, which, which projects do we want to build this year? Which one seems to be the biggest priority? Is it a connection to a park, a missing connection along a streetway or something? So they're not really in, established within there in a list of priority, we're going to build this one first, this one second. They're just all listed primarily. All those are demanded, and we'll just balance those out as we have enough impact fees that are collected to actually do a project.
And then just one more, I could, Mayor. I, I really never have understood the, the methodology of figuring out the difference between how many people live in a single-family home and how many people live in a multifamily home except for the census. So the slide up there a couple of minutes ago said that the city of Post Falls knows how many people live in those multifamily units and is less than the average. How do you know that?
I, I'll have to let Julie answer that. Go ahead, Julie. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, no, thank you. I apologize if I spoke. It is from the census. The data used to determine average residents per, per housing unit is population residing in different types of units. That is from the census, but it is specific, but the boundaries are, the data is for those, the population and the housing units within the city of Post Falls.
Correct. So did you use the 2020 census then? Has that been published? Did you use that?
Actually, it's the American Community Survey, and it's the, it's the sampling that's done on a, it's actually done on a, on a rolling basis. And so it's, there's a one-year sample, there's a five, three years, there's a one-year sample, there's a five-year sample that collects, that updates those figures, again, on this, on a rolling basis. But it's specific to, it's the comparison between those folks that live, you know, it's population by within different housing unit types and the numbers of housing units by type. And so you can use those two tables from the American Community Survey to determine an average household size for, again, by type. One of the things, you know, we do, we have a single family detached, a single family category that's a rolled, that's a combined, a single family detached and single family attached because of the changes in the census. Many years back, when the census went to the 10-year census and they took away the more detailed long-form survey, the American Community Survey took its place, but they still didn't delineate between a single-family attached unit and a single-family detached unit in some of the data. And so in any case, so we were, we were limited in that, but the multifamily is, multi-units are delineated. We can get population that reside in each of those types of units, and we can get the housing unit counts for those types of units, and then derive the, the household size in that with those two tables together.
And so the, and so if you're just even, just looking at the streets part, multifamily versus single family, the single family is paying almost twice as much. The single family is one unit, per multifamily is one unit. The single-family home is paying, and so is that somehow based on the number of units that is in the multifamily as well? Or is it just?
Yes. So a 100, 100-unit multifamily, you know, apartment building would pay the multifamily unit multiplied by 100.
I understand that part, but what I'm asking is, so are they paying a less amount of money because of the quantity of the units in the apartment building compared to a single-family home? If a single-family home has two bedrooms and two bathrooms, most likely they're going to have two cars. That's going to impact the streets in some sort of two-car way. A two-bedroom, two-bath apartment is likely going to have two cars. Is it not going to impact the streets in the same way?
Okay. I, I misinterpreted her question. Vehicle trip rates for multifamily units are lower than a single-family unit on average. And, and that's, those are the, the trip rates you're seeing, and that's the driver behind the impact fee amounts for, on the, in this case, the transportation fee.
Okay. Any other questions?
Al, I have a question. I don't know if it's for Julie or for Bill, but this is like a 20-year plan. I mean, the numbers and everything in here are stretched out to 2038, so 17-year plan. But how often, I mean, we're behind the mark as far as this one. It's been a long time since we've updated the impact fees. How soon are we going to look at this again?
So there's, 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 there's a 20-year plan on the transportation portion. Some of the other plans have 10-year portions within there. We have had discussions really recently that we need to update our transportation master plan, that would do, generate a new CIP for the transportation master plan. And then also as well, look at the parks master plan, review the public safety facilities, get all of those studies and get all those things current. At that point, then, we could move forward and look at our new impact fees at that point. But we really, we really need to look, also just update our master plans and come up with new levels of service, a new list of projects, new costs for those associated projects. And that's a couple of years off to get all of that together.
Al, Warren's going to come in.
So, you know, we've had conversations, we've, we've had kind of a double whammy on this study, one being COVID has delayed us a little bit, and then we've had a rapid run-up in property values over the last year that has made these numbers a little bit low compared to where they would have been, you know, a couple of years ago. Taking all that into account, the staff is, believes that we need to start this process almost immediately, again, to begin to try to make up that ground. Bill's alluding to, there's a number of steps that go into that. We need to make sure that the capital improvement plans are up to date so that we're, we're starting with a known. We know, we need to know what the number is, what we're anticipating the projects need to look like. We get that completed, then, I think we are looking at doing a relatively quick update to this, just because there's been so much change since this, this data came out.
So I'm going to hold your feet to the fire. We talk in five years? You'll be back in front of us in five years to update?
Some of that depends on unknowns. We haven't sat down and figured out what this looks like, the game plan going forward. I would tell you that all of us think that we need to start this sooner rather than later. And so some of that really is, what direction do you want us to go? Where are we going to head with this? And making sure that we can get the, the traffic improvements, the, the traffic capital plan back in front of you soon, get the parks plan back in front of you soon, so that we have numbers that we know we can work with.
I guess my biggest concern is these numbers are scary. They're scary big. They gotta be. I get that, because that's what it's going to cost to do this. But if we were doing this more consistently, I think we're a couple of years behind and, you know, if we wait another 10 years or whatever, the numbers are going to be super scary again. So I'm, I guess, from my point of view, I'm encouraging you, let's get this done, and let's be planning on reviewing these impact fees at least every five years. I know that's.
That's the goal to begin with. This one, I think, we're thinking quicker than that.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Julie, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, it's been a while since I've been to a council meeting, and I'm not sure what the protocol is any longer.
Just give us your name for the record and then watch the time.
My grandmother's eyes, and you don't need any of that. Doug Eastwood, City of Post Falls. And I'm, I'm here to speak in favor, but I'm also wearing two hats tonight. The North Idaho Centennial Trail Foundation asked me to speak in favor on their behalf. But more importantly, I want to speak on the behalf of myself as a resident of the city of Post Falls and the importance of what you're discussing tonight and hopefully implementing it. Too often, and I know this isn't the case for you, but too often, we take parks and pathways for granted. Too often, they're viewed as a non-essential item. But if you would imagine for just a moment, if you took those out of the equation, took the parks and the paths off the table and you didn't have any, city of Post Falls never planned to put it in, you wouldn't have the community you have today. Your parks and your paths generate an incredible amount of income tax base that supports everything that is essential. So they're, they are as essential as, as just about anything you want to, to look at. I've written a letter, and I would like to read that into the record, just for the folks that aren't here and, and may want to know, why are you supporting this? So, on behalf of the North Idaho Centennial Trail Foundation and, and myself, a resident of the city of Post Falls, the city of Post Falls has, for the last several years, and you already know this, been one of the fastest-growing communities in Idaho, if not the fastest. The growth takes a toll on the city's existing infrastructure. A major part of that infrastructure is the parks and trail system. New growth increases the use of parks and trails. That increased use will, at some point, begin to wear them out faster than you may anticipate. New growth can and should share the burden of offsetting that wear and tear. One way to do that is through the impact fees you are discussing tonight. Those dollars can be leveraged against state and federal grants, making those dollars stretch even farther toward land acquisition and development. An assumption I made, as you will probably be putting those into a dedicated line item, capital improvement fund, where they can be accessed for that purpose, but they can go 50 to 80% further than what you might collect here. And, and cost of land and the cost of development, as you're all aware, aware of, is going up. The impact fees assist the city by placing you in a position to stay astride of increased The health benefits of your parks and trail system are immeasurable. The benefits of walking and running, coupled with the various sports programs, enhances and enhances an individual's health and helps to reduce medical cost. That is another benefit of the parks and the pathways, is that you have a and the pathways is that you have a, a economic impact by creating a very healthy environment. Increased fees do not chase developers away, and that is particularly true for the city of Post Falls. There's a study done that's called the approximate principle. You've probably heard of that. It was implemented over 200 years ago, not in the United States. It was implemented outside of this country. Today it's embraced coast to coast, border to border.
Mr. Eastwood, your time is up.
Darn. I, I have, I have that problem. I can never get done in the amount of time they allow me. So again, uh, thank you and it is, uh, we are speaking in favor of.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, just as a bit of clarification for everyone who is listening, yes, those funds are put in a dedicated fund and they have specific line items so that they are used specifically for impact fee projects.
Thank you. Uh, wishing to speak neutral, Mr. Flowers.
Bob Flowers. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Okay, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I heard some things during that presentation that kind of made me change my mind. We all know, even though it was preached years ago, new growth does not pay for itself. I don't care who, whose figures you're using, it doesn't pay for itself. The figures that were, that were presented tonight, first I want to say I'm all in favor of impact fees. I wish this meeting would have happened a couple of years ago, but it didn't, so we go on from there. But the figures that were presented tonight are several, already a couple of years old. So we're already trying to start something new, already two years behind the eight ball. We need to update those figures to something realistic for today's, since you're going to enact these new impact fees as of, well, whenever you do, they need to reflect the true cost and the true figures of today, not from two or three years ago. That's all I have.
Thank you. Wishing to speak in opposition, Howard Burns.
Uh, good evening, Howard Burns, Post Falls. Um, first I, I'd like to thank Mr. Wolf and Ms. Wilhelm for their good questions. Um, $65,000 an acre is a ridiculous amount to consider that that's what you're going to be able to acquire land for. So my thought would be, and I'm not against the impact fees, I just think they're way too low, extremely low. Um, and maybe that's because I spent time in California, but the costs here are not that different for getting construction done. And you're not going to get it done. Land is 150,000 an acre now. If you go to, eh, Condemn right away to make Prairie Avenue work, because you're going to have it piecemealed if you don't, you're not going to pay $65,000 an acre for that land. Frontage rut, no, that's not going to happen. In terms of apartments, maybe back in 2000, we had less people in apartments per square foot than in single-family houses, but I don't think we do anymore. We built a lot of two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments as opposed to senior citizens apartments. I think we have just as many people in every apartment as we do in single-family homes. I think the fees should be the same and I think there should be a minimum of $2 a square foot or what's shown on there, one or the other. So it's either 864 bucks or $2 a square foot, uh, at least for roads. And that doesn't include any contribution for the big arterial issues. Where's Hutter? Where's the Hutter bypass getting funded? Are we relying on the state for that? Are we counting on the state? We counted on the state to fix Highway 41. They're three years behind and the on and off ramp is how many years behind? Eh, we're going to have Highway 41 sending thousands of cars down, two lanes each way to get jammed up at Mullen and an interchange that's going to be shut down for three years. Um, the Vista Water District just sent me my bill. In it, they gave a, a little blurb that they'd pumped 1 billion, 697 million gallons and their pumps were operating at 83% capacity except for a couple of days when they were 93 and 120%. So I hope we're functioning on water and are we keeping track of that? Because clearly A Vista's keeping track of water. Where are they going to get the money for all the new pumps they're going to need and new infrastructure? Is there enough in there if they're at 120% of capacity on a couple of days now? Um, if development fees are paid in an urban renewal district, I'd like to know who gets the money. Does it go to the urban renewal district or does it go into the capital improvement plans? There's no mention in this plan, and I think it's very disingenuous, there's two line items that are missing. Number one, it says public safety. It shouldn't say public safety as a line item. It should say police and police support because that's all it is, police and police support. There's no fire, there's no ambulance. And the citizens of Post Falls need to have that made very, very clear to them. There needs to be a fire and ambulance impact fee and it needs to happen soon. I'm going to vote for the bond issue, but I'm very disappointed that the impact fee's not on here now. The same thing is true of schools.
As we talked, last time you spoke.
Right.
The fire department impact fee comes from the fire district, not the city.
I understand.
We collect the funds.
But the city could have, the city could have taken the bull by the horns and pushed the fire department to get it done.
We're talking about city impact fees, so let's keep our comments to the city impact fees at this point.
You can have a fire impact fee.
The city cannot.
You could have pushed the fire department, the, the.
So, excuse me.
Fire and rescue. You could have gotten with them.
One second.
All right. In regards to schools, there's no school fee on here either.
Excuse me, sir. By statute, we're not allowed to collect impact fees for schools. The legislature will not even introduce a bill to allow school.
And what has, and what has the city done?
Stop. Let him finish for a second.
Let him finish, please. Fire impact fees are fees generated by the fire district, not by the city. When we're approached by the fire district, we will have a conversation with them and we will adopt the fees if they're appropriate.
And that, and that is just backwards. You do not need to wait. You could have pushed the fire district. You could have gone to them.
Excuse me. No, we're, we're, we're off in the weeds. We know what we can do.
We're not in the weeds. You don't have a, there should be a line item in this report that says that then. It should say, please note, the city cannot implement fire fees and cannot implement school fees. It should have been in here. It should have been pointed out to the citizens that you can't do it.
We're talking about impact fees we can collect, not those that we cannot.
But then show the people you can't do it.
Thank you. Next up, uh, wishing to speak in opposition, Mike, and I apologize, I mispronounced your name. Is it Pellicero?
Pellicero.
Pellicero, thank you.
Tony O'Neal, third grade spelling.
Well, I'll probably forget next time. So again, I apologize.
I appreciate it. I'm not really so much in opposition to the fees. I think they need to be done, but, uh, uh, Councilman Wolf said scary numbers big. To me, they're scary small. Um, all these numbers look really good, but like, it looks like they're cutting the, uh, public safety. And they were talking about, well, I think 4 million or something like that. We doubling population. I guarantee you, the chief is not going to be able to get a new building built for 4 million. It's going to be a way, way more. And I don't think they should be cutting. We can go other cities and look at, um, their street fee, traffic fee. I was just looking at that today. You could go on the, uh, Federal Highway Administration and see all the cities, counties, states that have traffic mitigation fees. I was looking up a few. One county has a traffic mitigation for a single-family residence of $9,400 because, uh, I was just sitting here, I Googled, uh, current cost for a two-lane undivided highway is $3 million a mile or more. The, the amount they're looking to collect with all the miles we have here in the city, we're getting tied close to Rathdrum, to Hutter. The state highway is going to start needing a lot more improvements, a lot bigger. I think we may, before we approve this one, unless we go, as Mr. Wolf said, and let's right away start looking at the next step again, maybe let's take and go other cities. Let's see what they're doing because I really think that the impact fees are low. Last house I built, uh, like 18 years ago, obviously I'm getting old, but I had to go to the, um, Parks Department alone, just that many years ago, cut them a check for like 1,500. The traffic fees were, I forget with the, with the mitigation fee, but it was like 6,000 or 7,000 for traffic mitigation. Um, school fees, we don't have it here in the state. I understand because when I was actually talking to Lieutenant Governor about it a couple of weeks ago, but we don't have that. But I had to go to the schools and cut them a check for five grand. So development does really put an impact, these fees, yes, I, you know, I'm not opposed to the fees, but I really, I would almost like to say, let's slow down and take a step and let's look at what other cities are doing. Maybe even, I think they should be more. Public safety is going to have a lot of demands, the highways and just for future growth. So we should, I would just ask for just look at those first. Thank you.
So you're, you're not opposed to fees, but you feel your opposition would be that they're not high enough?
They're, we're, we're cutting, I think we're cutting ourselves way short in looking at how much cost of going up every year. I mean, just building materials right now are just through the roof. I mean, a two-by-four, there used to be two bucks, is now eight bucks. And what's it going to be? And I, I just really, really, I think we should really look a lot higher. I think we're cutting ourselves way short as a city and gonna, we're going to pay for it later.
Good.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Shannon, anyone else?
Done.
Any rebuttal, Bill or, or Julie?
Uh, just real quickly on a couple of things. Um, with the apartments, we have to.
Phil.
Excuse me. I'm kind of off. With the apartments, we do have to use, um, data that's, you know, that's collected and that's used out there. Um, hopefully the, the next update, the census data and the data that we'll be using, um, the national data will reflect the, any changes in lifestyle that, that has occurred in the past couple of years. And then, um, just as clarification and to confirm, fees collected, even if they're within an urban renewal district, those fees do stay with the, the city of Post Falls.
Julie, any other comments?
Uh, uh, thank you. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to, to comment. Um, just, just one, um, point on, uh, sort of comparable communities and looking what other, other folks, uh, do. You know, each community, um, the assumption is, is other communities have also undertaken a similar study, uh, to, to identify what their maximum supportable, uh, fees are, uh, reflecting all of those requirements that are required, um, you know, through law and through precedent of need proportionality and benefit. Um, and, uh, and the types of capital improvement projects and system level improvements, uh, that, um, that the locality is, expects to pay for, again, that are capacity improvements, that are system level improvements. So, uh, while, um, you know, I appreciate the, um, you know, the, the anticipation of, uh, updating and, and, and potentially, um, you know, looking at, uh, looking to expand, uh, categories, um, those other places, uh, where you may just, you know, look at a fee schedule, um, uh, from somewhere else. Uh, there's a lot going on underneath that fee schedule, um, including categories that are included, components that are included within those categories, uh, the, the, um, the, you know, uh, many, many other assumptions, um, embedded, the, the level of local, uh, participation in some of those improvements and the life cycle in terms of the, the life cycle and the age of a community, uh, where they are in terms of those system level needs. So just wanted to make that point. Um, and we do, um, you know, our firm works nationally and, uh, you know, really no two impact fee studies are alike. Uh, and, uh, dollar amounts are going to be reflective of the community in which, in which we're, we're working. Again, uh, again, reflecting as Bill just mentioned about, um, the local demographic data as well as the capital, capital improvement needs and those, those range of components that are included within each of the categories.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing. You know, my comments is when we started looking at this a couple of years ago, unfortunately it did take time. Uh, I thought the fees were, were way high. And especially when we add in the multimodal. Now we look at it and I find it interesting. We've had discussions in the past when we've discussed impact fees and we've had several developers, builders show up in opposition. I don't see any. I haven't heard any comments. And I, I know that they were reached out to. So I think times have changed. Uh, I'm going to share the comment that was made earlier is that I wish we would have instituted these increases two years ago. But again, you know, we were hamstrung by the COVID and so now I think we get them in place and I would strongly encourage staff to get on the review of them as soon as we can. Uh, personally, I said this before, uh, I would, uh, pers- myself, I would be supportive of an impact fee on, for schools as well as for fire district. But, uh, these are the fees that we can by statute, uh, institute or collect. And I think, uh, my position is that I would be in favor of these with the understanding that we will review them in the very near future. Joe?
Uh, first, I guess what you said, two years ago when I looked at these, I thought they were insane. Um, you know, multimodal was new, so that was a major increase. Uh, the parks, uh, fee dang near doubled. Uh, a lot happens in two years and now I think they're obnoxiously sane. So I'm in the same, the same boat. Uh, given what's going on right now, it doesn't seem to be any kind of undue restriction to somebody's right to develop their property, uh, they see fit. And I don't think it's going to affect the final price anymore because the drivers of the price increases now are way, way, way beyond orders of magnitude what this would ever cost. So, uh, two years ago I'd have said, heck no. And now I'm like, yeah, we probably ought to renew this too. Uh, as far as some of the comments that were made, uh, I know there's a lot of confusion because there's a lot of local government. So the, the city of Post Falls is one taxing district and the residents of Post Falls elect us to represent them within that taxing district and we have certain powers, uh, you know, authorities granted to us by the state of what we can control and what we can't. We've got the Post Falls Highway District, though it shares a name, it's a completely different taxing district. The residents of that district, uh, not all of which are within the Post Falls city limits, uh, elect people to represent the authorities that that district has granted by the state. Uh, School District, again, it's called Post Falls School District, doesn't share exactly the same boundaries as the city of Post Falls, has an elected school board to, uh, determine what, uh, authorities that the school district has, how those are carried out within that school district. So if the city of Post Falls, those of us that are elected to, to manage the city authorities, try to dictate to other elected officials of different districts, what they should do with their authorities, that is outright. And one, it's not legal. Two, it's just not morally correct. They have their own legal elected officials to determine that. So we can't even, I don't even want to get involved with how they tax within their districts. Uh, it's just not the right thing to do. So we don't. So that's why the safety, the public safety only includes police. That's what we're in charge of here in the city. It's why it doesn't include the fire district because we weren't elected to do that. The fire district commissioners were elected to do that. So, uh, if, if anybody's upset at what the fire district's doing or what the school district's doing, please talk to those elected officials that you elected for those districts about that. Uh, other than that, I think that's all I got.
Al, thanks, Joe.
Well, uh, as I've said earlier, I think we're behind, but we can't start over. I just don't think that's a, you know, start over and do a new study, you know, update everything would just take too long. It's, you know, we're better off, let's just get this done. And as I said earlier, I'm going to hold your feet to the fire. Let's come back in five years and, and look at all the new numbers and make a decision at that time. You know, part of the thing that, that always hits me is, yes, we've had outstanding growth and these numbers are supposed to jump in there and some people will even say, well, you know, you increase these impact fees, that's going to slow down growth. Well, maybe, well, maybe it won't. But the other side of that is it goes right into the cost of living because these impact fees get pushed on to the people who either buy the house or live in the apartment. That's unfortunate. So I'm always on trying to balance the impact fees, paying for growth and what it does to affordable housing. Another issue that we're just going to have to fight over. The multimodal, year and a half ago, I was like Joe, I was like, is this something we really need? But I'll tell you what, as a cyclist who tries to get around Post Falls on a bike, it's difficult. And if we want to encourage people to use other modes of transportation to ride from this point to this point, we've got to create the trails. And I think we're behind the, the curve on that one as well. So I would be in favor of the impact fees as presented.
Thank you. Carrie?
Well, I go back to what Linda, um, questioned about multifamily, what they pay per unit versus what a single family home pays per unit. And I don't see why there should be a difference in that. But so our choices here tonight are to adopt this or not.
Yep.
Just two choices. It can't come back.
So your, your choices tonight are you can adopt it as presented, you can make changes to what's presented tonight. Um, if we make changes, we have to go back and depending on the extent of those changes, that may require some additional work, some additional studies to. that may require some additional work, some additional studies to ferret out what it is that we're trying to accomplish. From there, we re-notice the hearing and bring it back to you. Those are your choices for tonight. We're also, you're, so you're looking tonight at adoption, the ordinance, adoption of the, the fee schedule? You're not looking at the adoption of the fee itself, a resolution will come back that will set those fees, and we need to have a bit of a discussion here in a second about what the effective date of that change would be, once we have a sense of where we're going on what the fee is going to be.
So the fee could be changed?
Yes, you can always change the fee. There's some caveats to that, obviously, the, the fee has to be based on, on data. We can't, we, it has to be based on a study that demonstrates that this is the maximum input or impact that is supportable based on the data that we're looking at and your methodology. So you can't go above that, you couldn't raise the fee based on a presumption that the costs are higher, even though we all know they are, we don't have the data that supports that at this point. You can lower it, there's some costs to lowering it, because now, I'm gonna get a little bit nerdy here. So what happens is, if you have, let's take parks, because that's an easy one to understand. So if you have a, a level of service that's 10 acres per thousand, that's your level of service, but you're only willing to fund it at, say, eight acres per thousand, that's creating a deficiency. And that deficiency gets carried forward over time, and you can't use, so the next time you update your impact fees, you can't use those impact fees to go back and fill the hole that was left the time before. You have to use general fund dollars or some other revenue stream to fill that deficiency. So you can do it, you can lower the fees, but you're, the caveat is that you're potentially creating a hole that you're gonna have to fill at a later time, using grant revenue, general fund revenue, some other source other than impact fees. Because impact fees can only be spent on growth captured by the people who are paying those fees.
So that piece of multifamily paying a different impact fee per unit than a unit for a single family, we can't do anything to make those without going through a whole nether?
So you would have to find data that would support making that change. And what I think I heard Julie saying is that the data that is available, that is reported, doesn't show that. It shows that there's fewer trips generated, there's fewer people living in a multifamily unit as compared to a single family unit, on average, not, not in any individual case, but on average.
And that data's subject to change.
And that data will change, and we'll look at it again the next time we do this.
Okay. Linda?
And since the last time we did this was 2012, can we not just look at a part of this within, like, the next 24 months, basically that part? Because I'm, I mean, I, I'm comfortable making a motion to pass this, but I, I don't, I don't think, I think you can drive right around Post Falls and, and get the data that the same amount of cars, I mean, I only have one car at my house, and, you know, I know apartments down the street, almost every one of them have two cars. You know what I mean? It's like, we're, why can't we gather the data? It doesn't seem like it's gonna be that big of a deal.
In order for it to be defensible, it needs to really be based on sort of published data or a, a published methodology. It becomes really difficult if it's based on sort of windshield surveys. We could do some of that, I'm not sure how defensible that would ultimately be. There may be other methodologies, I'm not a, an economic, economics guy, I'm not a fee, I'm not a consultant, I don't do that work, there may be other methodologies that may work. We can look at that.
So if you, if we pass this, can you, like, look into it in the near future?
So, yeah, I, I think that's the, the goal, is assuming we're moving forward tonight, that we want to take a look at this sooner rather than later.
So we, we could, yeah, if, get this in place and then start reevaluating?
So just to clarify between the two of you, if Linda were to make a motion, including that we would go forward, looking at that, that's an okay motion?
Yeah, I, I think it's a separate motion. Well, let me think about that.
And then?
So that's, that's not on the agenda tonight as an action item, so we could, we could certainly put that on the next agenda for direction from the council to staff to begin the work on a next, on a next study. That's not on the agenda tonight, so you can't take action on that, but we can put that on in a future agenda.
And so in this study, or there was some mention in this packet, that we didn't want to make these, going forward until August.
Are we gonna hear, excuse me, Linda, I think we're gonna hear a recommendation or discussion on that, is that correct?
So we can, yes.
Oh, well, when are we hearing that?
As soon as you guys get your questions done.
So I, I would like, just, if I can, let's just poll the, the other councillors, then we'll go back to that question. Okay? Lynn?
I'm all in favor of it, I, we've gotta move forward, we have the basis for the fees that are established right now. I think we need to move forward with what we have, and then give staff the direction to jump on the bandwagon, and let's get started and reevaluate it.
Okay. Steve?
Everybody made most of the comments, but again, I'm, I'm for this proposal. I think we get, get behind, we had our workshop a couple of years ago, but due to COVID, this probably would have been done a year ago, a year and a half ago, if we wouldn't have had COVID. So we are moving along, and sometimes the wheels of government does spin a little bit close, because you have to have the documentation to back up all these studies, and to do those studies, it does take some time. But I think we're on the right track. I guess my question, kind of follow up to Linda's, if we went to amend this plan, do you have to amend the whole plan right away, or is it just certain sections you could do? Say, if you had the transportation study done in two years, could you come back and just do transportation? Or do you have to do all, everything at once?
I think you can do that, I mean, we're, normally, you would look at sort of a, a refresh at some level, trying to make sure that the numbers and the assumptions are still correct. I think you could take a tiered approach to that and amend the, the, the plan as you go forward, because it's based on multiple different areas, and the plans for streets are different than the plans for police, which is different than the plans for parks. So you could probably take a rolling approach to that. One of the things that we're planning on doing, once we're done with this adoption, is sort of sitting down, having a bit of a debrief, figuring out, how best do we move forward, given the, the constraints that we have? So how do we move this in the best way possible?
Yeah, because I think a rolling plan would go a little bit quicker, because you could get segments done every two years, instead of trying to wait 10, nine or 10 years to get it all done at once on that. So I would be in favor of that. The other thing we get back to, and I know we're gonna talk about this later, is I'm for almost starting this tomorrow. I know we have to wait 30 days, we're gonna have a discussion, putting it off, but I think we're behind the eight ball. We were gonna prove this almost a month ago, but was delayed, so we're 30 days behind now, so. So I'm, I'm for it, and just one more question, and I know Joe's follow up on the fire districts. Cootney County Fire District is not only Post Falls, it services the city adult gardens, the east side, and so they have their fire commissioners who need to approach each one of those entities with that. And so, so I don't think one city can do, well, it's the county fire department, they've got, got different jurisdictions they need to visit with before they get their plan together.
Thanks. Al had another comment, question?
Actually, Steve asked the question, that was, can we pull this out and do transportation for what Linda was just saying? You know, get on that part and update that, that study, and if there's a need for changing that fee, so.
Okay. Joe?
And I knew there was something I was forgetting to say, but one thing that I've been trying to keep in mind is, basically, the wheels of government turn slow, and that's been intentional from our founders on up, because things can change rapidly, but hardly anything keeps changing the same direction for a long period of time. Now, the price of lumber was brought up, you know, a stick was $2 a year ago, now it's $8. Two years ago, two years from now, it's probably not gonna be 40. Everything ebbs and flows, goes up and down. I'm reminded of 2001-ish to 2006, when we were kind of here in a smaller scale, where housing prices were going up really rapidly. I remember seeing billboards, 115% loan to value, all the, and, and people I knew, fortunately, I already owned a home, and I bought one in 2003 or '04, before it really got high. People were panicking to buy houses, thinking that they were gonna roll up to 600,000 bucks by the year 2008. And then the bottom dropped out. So things can drop out just as fast as they go up. So I, I think a, a measured approach, based on actual data, even though it's a little bit slow, is the best way to go. I don't wanna, I don't think it's a good way to govern by panic, per se. We've gotta look with the, with the benefit of hindsight, that things go up and down. I, I think it's inevitable, recession is coming. This is a very fascinating time to be alive, because we're seeing the effects of monetary policy in real time. You know, every Western country is printing trillions of dollars and throwing it at people, and this is what's happening. Now, now a three-quarter inch piece supply, what is $90 for all of a sudden, because there's so much demand pent up, because there's a bunch of cash around. This is gonna be the first recession I've ever seen that's brought on by too much demand and not enough global capacity to support it. So that's putting a strain on the job market, it's, it's pretty interesting. But my point is, yeah, we're behind, but two years from now, it might look really unreasonable. So I think the slow, measured, data-driven approach is the best way to go.
Good. Now, to get back to Linda's comment on timing, so do we need to have, what is the best way to handle it? Should we just poll the council now, or should it be included in a motion?
So I think in a motion, a couple of quick comments on that. So as I said, tonight you have before you the ordinance, that ordinance adopts the study and sets this in motion. We didn't bring the fee resolution, because we didn't know the effective date, and we didn't honestly know what the fee was going to be. So the next item would put that on a future agenda, establishing the fees based on the study, and also setting an effective date. Under statute, the earliest it can take effect is 30 days after tonight's public hearing. Staff has asked that you take a, or at least think about and discuss the idea of having an effective date, that's August 1st, that's 60 additional days beyond the required 30. The idea there is, and I'll be honest, this is not a uniform belief on staff, but there is, it is a fairly healthy jump, going back to something that Councilors Wolf and Malloy said, trying to take, you know, on the one point of view, the costs are doubling, and so for the folks who are doing this and have got contracts and are selling things, they've got plans in place, giving them a chance to get their permits in and get permitted under the existing fee resolution, rather than having them trying to adjust. We didn't want to kick it out forever, we wanted to try to find something that you might want to consider. I don't, like I said, I don't think there's any unanimity here on staff on how best to handle that, but there is a concern about trying to be fair on both sides of the coin.
Okay.
So with that, yeah, I would, your motion, if you would tell us when you would like this to be in effect, we would bring that back to you in the, in the fee resolution.
Okay. And I have one more quick question before we come to you for motion, Linda, if that's all right, is throughout this discussion, we've talked about the growth, et cetera, and we know that we're expanding on the, the perimeter of the city. I know at one point, we had talked about, is there any ability for consideration of infill? So if we've got folks coming in and, and infilling lots, is there, does, city have the ability to look at any different level of impact fees for, for those?
The, the quick answer is yes. How it's done is a little bit different than what you might think. Julie alluded to the fact that you essentially establish a service area, and so you look at what's the cost for this service area. Right now, we have treated, and historically, we have treated the entire city as our service area, so the fees are uniform across the city. That is not universally true, there are other places that divide their city up into quadrants or other service areas. Those service areas need to be rational, you can't sort of do a gerrymander, stealing a term from a different area, and make one that's a little bit strange. But if they're rational areas, for instance, if you've got an area of town that's largely established, the parks and the roads are in place, you could draw a service area boundary for that area that would be an infill area, and those fees could be lower. Because, because the, it's not growing as quickly, it doesn't need to have the same level of improvements completed. You can't just do a credit, that's not allowed under the statutes.
I wouldn't want to see anything held up, I just think it's something that may make sense to look at, is if we want to encourage infill. I'll let Linda make the motion.
I have another question. Sorry. Okay, so staff wanting to put it off, and you just said something about plans and contracts, so the, the builders that have already brought the plans and applied for their permits are under the old fees, correct? If you've?
It's the fee in effect at the time that you submit for your building permits, so?
Correct.
You would be, the folks that were in the queue, who have submitted their building permits, those folks are going to be under the existing fee scheme. It's the folks who are, haven't submitted yet, who, who are working on a plan, who maybe have penciled out their project based on a fee scheme that isn't going to be in effect, those are the people who potentially could be impacted. Again, this is, there's no perfect answer here, it's just trying to figure out, is there a way to try to balance giving people some time?
How would we, how would we know how long they'd be out there, and what, what they really have, I mean, are, are those sketched out that you guys already have?
Um, no, it's, it's, it's just sort of a grace window, so that people have, if they're, so, back here, the thought process when we picked August as a potential that you might want to think about, was how long does it take, if you're starting from scratch? Can you get from scratch through the, the goalpost in that amount of time? And so for people who are starting new, or can expect a new fee scheme, you're not gonna get through that in, in 90 days. It's the people who have gotten a ways down the path that we're concerned about, and it's, again, it's just a concern, it's not an overarching concern, it's something that we thought you should at least consider.
Okay. Al, did you have one more comment?
Yeah, I, I, I understand what Warren's saying, and I, I appreciate that, but we're already behind. And my feeling is that the difference between the old fee on a single-family house to the new fee is, what, $2,000, $3,000? On a $400,000 house, I don't think the contractor's gonna go broke if he's gotta eat that fee. So I wouldn't want to push it out any further than the, the 1st of July, I would prefer to do it the 1st of June, but if we, but I'll meet you halfway and say, 1st of July.
That's what I was gonna say.
That's what I was gonna say, too, because we're hitting the peak of our building season in the summer months, and I'm afraid if we push it out too long, all the builders are gonna try to get in everything ahead of time. So I'm willing to meet in the middle, too, July 1st, on that.
So do you want that date in that motion?
I think that would be helpful, that way we know what to put in the resolution.
I'd move to approve the adoption of the CIP and TESHLA-BIS Development Impact Fee Report, effective July 1st.
Perfect. Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, very good discussion, thank you for the input. Next action item tonight, public hearing is fiscal year 2021 budget amendment, and with that, I will open the public hearing.
And I, I just, before you start, I'd say that these budget amendments are something that we consider once or twice a year. I mean, it, it's nothing new that, it, it's not a change in practice or procedure.
No, not at all, there's a lot of times where, in fact, some entities I've been at, we do them quarterly, just because the revenues, they want to tie the revenues more in tight with how the expenses come through. And again, a lot of places I've also been, they will budget for revenue than expense, and if the expense, if the revenue doesn't come in, they just don't follow the expense through. So we don't usually do very many budget amendments here, no, but they're not very uncommon at all.
We do a couple a year typically.
Yeah, a couple times.
Cheers.
All right. There are a couple items I wanted to ask council to amend the current existing budget for. The city receives some CARESAC funds, and we have a plan on how to spend. And when we were talking with department heads, we have a plan of 530,000 for the, the title is the Post Falls Landing Park Project. That's going to be considered completing part of the esplanade and updating the park that, updating the park that the Parks Department is coordinating with the Vista, so there's 530,000 on that. Also, public safety for, buy some new computers for their police vehicles, 215,000 for that. And also Streets is wanting to buy a plow and blade for 30 grand. The other big, the lion's share of this budget amendment is with the wastewater plant. The water outfall project didn't occur in the 20, what year, was it 2020 budget? And so we want to complete it on 2021 budget. I gotta figure out what year I'm in, so, so it's gonna be the 2021 budget. So we have almost $3.6 million that we want to reallocate for, in the budget for wastewater for this fiscal year.
Just to be very clear, that's just carrying from last year into this year?
Yeah, it didn't occur last year, the project didn't get completed, and so we need to complete it this year, and so in order to do that, it wasn't, that money, that information wasn't available by the time we did the 21 budget, so we want to reappropriate for this year.
Any questions, Jason?
Yeah, go ahead.
A couple things.
A couple of things, Jason. The five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand on the park, is this kind of a miss?
Kind of a miss, I understand.
Well, when we first originally sat down and talked about building this park, this was, Avista was going to, they wanted a pad, they'd build us a park. Now, we're talking about over a half a million dollars that the city's throwing into it, and we've already thrown some money into it. So, I guess that's where, I know the, kind of the background on this, but...
So, part of it is, we sort of view this as one system that stretches from Falls Park through the esplanade, through the, what's going to be the, what we're calling the Avista Project area, where we're going to have the little esplanade, then the esplanade that will wrap all the way back over to Spokane Street. There's two stairwells in that area that need to be completed still to get people back up to Spokane Street and also up to the extension of Third Street when that's constructed. So, this money would fund potentially the completion of those two stairwells, some additional amenities into the park area that, as you remember, the budget was a little bit tight, the construction costs came in significantly higher than were planned, so this will allow us to potentially put in some of the things that we took out to get the budget back in line, some buffing up of the esplanade so that once this is all completed, you have something that works well as a piece for the whole length of it. It becomes a bit of a critical issue ultimately to be able to have more access points to the esplanade because the parking at the Falls Park end is pretty limited. So, having that access point up to Third Street, having the access point clear at the end back up to Spokane becomes pretty important at some point in time, and probably sooner rather than later, given that the park is under construction as we speak, the park piece of this.
I guess what I mean by a miss is that when we first talked about the park, I'll call it the Landings Park, I don't know what you want to call it, Landings Park, this was never really a part of that. It wasn't like you came, the staff came to council and said, "We've got this thing worked out with Avista, they're going to do this piece of it, but we're probably going to want to do the rest of this, and so, we're going to, eventually going to spend five-hundred-thousand dollars to really get it all done."
So, part of, part of this actually is separate from our agreement with Avista. For instance, the stairwell up to Third Street, that was part of our acquisition of the property for Avista to do their project on. We agreed that we would build that stairwell. So, I mean, part of this is us fulfilling our obligation under our purchase and sale agreement. Part of it is potentially earmarked for, we have the existing esplanade that's been down there for any number of years. The agreements in place for that have been in place for fifteen, twenty years, and it's never been transferred to the city, so there's going to have to be some work done on that to sort of bring it up to scratch as it comes into the city. So, it's, it's a catch-all number, it's harder to break down and say, "This much is going to go here, this is much is going to go there," because it's really trying to make the whole system blend and function as we bring on the amphitheater portion of this.
Okay.
Okay.
On the, the computers for the police department, again, was this, is this something that we've been planning on doing? We just have the money now, so we want to jump ahead and do this? And I guess, then the next question comes, since you're up there, Chief.
You bet.
On the unfunded, the three-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, because the way I read this, it almost sounds like that was a miss, too. Like, we didn't know that that three-twenty-nine was going to be in the budget originally?
Service contract, there it is. I'll touch on the computers real quickly, sorry, Mayor, Council, Pat Knight, Chief of Police. The computer systems themselves, those are going to outfit our seventeen older cars. So, the seventeen older cars are running off systems, we went through, too, as, welcome to technology, we run like our third system of computers and camera systems for those cars. Updating those can be expensive, they run about ten to twelve thousand dollars per car. So, this opportunity gave us, I'm sorry, the CARES Act funding would give us the opportunity to replace those seventeen older units. What happens with those older units is, they break down frequently. Our IT staff does everything they can to make sure they're functioning well, working well, but they're an older system that's no longer supported. So, when you send it back to the company for any type of repair, it's in excess of four hundred dollars to repair them. And so, this is an opportunity for us to take those seventeen older cars, let's refurbish them with new systems, new units, and get them back on the street where they belong. So, that would just be updating those, those older outdated unserviceable units that eventually we'd have to do something with. We just have to find a way to budget for those, doing five cars a year or whatever we could do to make sure those work, because our cars are averaging, being a take-home car program, we're averaging ten years out of our cars, so it's giving us that opportunity.
And quickly, I want to go on record stating, this is not CARES Act funds, this is funds and general fund, because I keep, I've heard that said two or three times, that these are not CARES Act funds, these are general fund dollars that are available for any general fund item.
One more question?
Yeah, on the three-twenty-nine, because it sounded like this was a service agreement with Motorola that we just didn't know we needed, or?
Correct. When the radio project was completed, they had a two-to-five-year service agreement with Motorola that entered the contract for the radio program that was just updated through the, what was it, two, two million dollars? Anyway, whatever the project, whatever the project was to update the radio system, at the very end was a Motorola contract that was, that was needed for the service, for the five-year service agreement. And that was a miss.
It was a miss.
Yeah.
And that's coming out of Fund Zero Zero Eight?
It's coming out of, yes, yes.
Which is?
That is our nine-one-one fund, which is separate from our general fund. So, it's telecommunications dollars that are paying for this.
Okay. Any other questions of Jason? Anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
You don't care to rebut?
I'm good.
All right. Close the public hearing. Counsel, how would you like that?
I would move to approve the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up is unfinished business returning ordinances, and we do have one ordinance tonight.
Does Mr. Wilson want to talk first, or?
No, this is just accomplishing what we just did, the, this is the ordinance for the impact fees.
Thank you. I'd move to place the ordinance, approval of the impact fees, on its first and only title, reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Cooney County, a municipal corporation of the State of Idaho revising the Development Impact Fee chapter of the Post Falls Municipal Code, amending section nineteen oh four oh one oh to amend purpose, amending section nineteen oh four oh two oh to cite definitions in Idaho code, amending section nineteen oh four oh six oh to modify calculation of impact fee, amending section nineteen oh four oh seven oh to provide citation to credits and reimbursement, amending section nineteen oh four oh eight oh to revise administrative procedures, amending section nineteen oh four oh nine oh to amend credits, reimbursement, and waiver provisions, amending section nineteen oh four one hundred to revise refund conditions, amending section nineteen oh four one ten to revise appeals process, amending section nineteen oh four one thirty to adopt new addendum that includes essential technical information, amending section nineteen oh four one sixty to revise the other provision, other powers section, providing that the remaining sections of Post Falls City Code shall remain in effect, providing for severability, providing for, for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
Move to approve the impact fee ordinance and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes, and I'm thankful that you just read that summary only, or by title only. Next item on the agenda is new business, and tonight we have none, followed by administrator staff reports. Mr. Wilson, public notices.
So, I'm going to move over here. So, at our last council meeting, we had some public comment asking about or commenting on how we are doing our notices for public hearings, so I wanted to show you what we're doing and also talk about our process. So, a grab, as an example, this is the format of sign that we use when we're posting property. Hopefully, you can notice from there, it's a bright color that's done intentionally so that it gets people's attention, they can see it as they're driving by. You'll also notice that it's not paper, it's, again, intentionally, because if you have paper products, they tend to get wind, we get rain, things fall apart. So, these are mounted on a post that are driven in. We typically post each side of a proposed area that's being developed. You'll also notice that some places, when you see a sign, they have a paper or a laminated paper that's attached to this in some fashions so that they can change out the copy as you do various hearings. We've not done that because that causes, that ends up, what ends up happening, you get a wind, the paper gets separated, blows away, it doesn't provide the notice that you're hoping for, it gets wet in the rain, people can't read it, it doesn't provide the notice. So, we use sort of a grease pen, it has all of the information on here. Let me set this down. You'll also notice that there's a QR code down here at the bottom. So, if you see the sign, you come up, snap a picture of it, follow that QR link, it will take you to our city website where you can get all of the information about the public hearing. It's not a perfect sign, it has its strengths and weaknesses, but it does a pretty good job. One of the things that we've tried to do is make them uniform so that when you see a bright yellow sign when you're driving by or you're walking by, you'll know that's a City of Post Falls Public Hearing Notice sign. There's been some concern, or at least the testimony last week was that, that these are not large enough because you can't read them as you're driving by. I'd maybe let the chief speak to this, but I'm pretty sure we typically don't want people reading signs as they're driving by. We want to make sure that people see it, people know that it's there, that they can pull over and safely read it if they're in a car, or that they know that it's a, it's a sign for a city public hearing, they can go to the website, they can go to the public notices and find the information relevant to that hearing. If they can pull over, great, we probably don't want folks trying to read that detail. That sign would have to be massive for us to be able to provide enough information that someone driving by at forty-five miles an hour is going to be able to make use of. Additionally, it's, so it's, that's just one of the elements that we use when we're noticing for a public hearing. Notice is published in the paper two weeks in advance. In addition to that, we also send notice to all of the political subdivisions that provide services based on what that development is going to be. We send notice to the press so they can run articles if it's something that they find relevant. We also mail notice typically to all residents within three hundred feet of the exterior boundaries of the project in question. If that's going to be a lot of people, if it's above two hundred mailed notice, there's alternative notice provisions that are allowed under state code, but generically, we're mailing to, up to three hundred feet around the exterior boundaries of the project. We also place the notice on our website. In addition, there's a statewide website run by the Idaho Newspapers Association where you can access all of the public notices for every jurisdiction in the state. So, we also post it on our notice board. So, the idea isn't that we're necessarily going to catch everyone, but in doing a number of different noticing provisions, the odds are that you're going to catch most people who are interested. And if you don't, you probably have caught their neighbor who's going to tell them about it. The idea is to provide reasonable notice so that most people will become aware of it and show up and testify, and it typically works. We often, it's kind of funny a little bit, and we often have people show up and say, "Well, I didn't get notice." You're here, so you did get notice, you didn't maybe receive a mailing, but you found out about it, and that's what the statute really is aimed at, is making sure that there's a general public awareness of upcoming public hearings, so word spreads and people show up and turn out. As I said, the best place, honestly, to find out what's coming up, if you don't follow the, the press and look at the legals, come to our website. They're always posted on the website, it's always available there.
I would comment that, and I think I commented previously, but I do read the press every morning, and the City of Post Falls public notices are easily identifiable. I mean, I can look without even reading them, reading them, I can tell if it's going to be the City of Rathrum or the City of Post Falls. So, again, I like the idea of making sure people are aware of it, and we're required to do certain things, and we do do them, but we have stopped, and I know the comment was made that signs weren't big enough, but I know we have stopped and actually gone back and walked up and read the sign to see what the public hearing was, so...
One other quick comment I forgot. We intentionally post these ourselves, some jurisdictions, they'll have the developer go post the site. We don't do that, we have our staff go out and do it, and part of that, as I said, is intentional because it's the city's interest to make sure that the notice is effective. If there's a problem and the notice doesn't work, it's, it's us that has to defend that decision. And so, we want to make sure that it's posted properly, posted in a location that people can find it, rather than maybe behind a shrub or something down the way. So, we do that intentionally so that we make sure that we get good notice out there when we post these things.
Thank you, Warren. Any comments?
I have a, I have a good comment. Remember a little while back, we talked about making videos, in fact, I think maybe Shannon made a video, somebody made a video. I'm wondering if you could make a video of that and put it on the website? I mean, we could even clip off what Warren just said and what he demonstrated and put it on the website. Remember, you were going to do informational videos, or?
Yeah, we've done a couple of them.
Yeah, yeah. I just think it's a really good idea.
Yeah, we, this is actually on the list, it's one of the things that we would like to do. We've got probably half a dozen to a dozen different sort of four- or five-minute segments that we would like to do as time allows. It's just finding when time allows. But, yeah, that's definitely on the list. We would like to have better people, better information out there so people know that what we're doing, and they, honestly, we want them to know where they can get the information on the hearings, because your decisions as either the Planning Commission or the City Council is really contingent on the quality of the testimony, the quality of the evidence that you receive at the hearing. Most of your decisions are based on adopted criteria, and if you don't get testimony that speaks to that criteria, then there's not much you can do with it, so...
Yeah, great.
Thanks, Warren, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address counsel regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Name for the record, please, and we've got five minutes.
Get an extra minute?
And, all right, citizen comments, you do.
Howard Burns, first of all, I apologize for getting somewhat anxious over the school impact fee. I would like to suggest, just as you were discussing with the signs in an informational bulletin, that you have something on the website that says, "We would appreciate the citizens of Post Falls writing their elected representatives, and here's a potential letter that you might want to send, and ask citizens to send letters to support a school impact fee at the state legislature." You can do that. You can help people get their act together and lobby our state government, because that's what we need. I understand that's what we need, but the city can help do that, okay? Secondly, in regard to the signs, which were just discussed in a staff report, I appreciate that. I would make two observations. I still think the signs are way too small. I think if you went downtown and walked amongst the folks and did a little ad hoc survey and said, "What color are the notice signs in the city?", and if anybody had a right answer, you'd give them five bucks, I think you'd end the day with your five dollars in your wallet, because I don't think people know. So, maybe your information thing will work. I will tell you that on the recent, two recent hearings, where the one was unpleasant for you and the one was on Prairie, if you tried to stop your car on Prairie to get the QR code, you were going to be killed. If you could find a place to park and then walk back to the sign, that was hard to do, too. So, I would suggest, A, if the sign has to go where you can't park, then post an extra sign where the logical pull-off place is so that somebody doesn't have to try to walk back to the sign along Prairie Avenue and potentially get hit, because there's no sidewalk, and it was buried down in the swale. And Coeur d'Alene at least has an eight- or ten-foot pole when they've got a sign in has an eight or 10-foot pole when they've got a sign in a lower area. At least, I saw that in place up by Costco. They had a sign that was at eye height, as opposed to being down at foot height. So that was, would be my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, chief, I know you had one to make announcement.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council.
Want me to set the timer for him?
Yeah, set it on this guy.
This will be 30 seconds, I promise. Pat Knight, Chief of Police, thank you. Just wanted to give a quick shout-out that the Post Falls Police Department K-9 Unit is having their annual golf tournament on July 31st, 9:00 a.m., the Links. I'm looking at my magic ball, and the weather looks phenomenal. So come out and join it, support it, and tell them I'd give a shout-out for it. Thank you.
Someone said something about holding feet to the fire, so.
Good weather.
Mayor and council comments? I do have a comment, a couple of comments. Number one, planning zoning is a group of volunteers. And I know because several of you have sat on that commission. They had a meeting last Tuesday that went over five hours. They had four public hearings. They've gone from one meeting a month to two meetings a month. And, you know, just based on the level of growth we're having, and the emotions involved, and I understand, I'm not, no negative there, they are subject to additional time requirements, I mean significantly additional time requirements. And they're also subject to a lot of negativity. My concern is that for a volunteer board, I don't want to burn them out. I also don't want to burn staff out, because staff, I appreciate what you folks have done. And staff is trying to get these public hearings brought forward on a timely basis. And I understand that. But just so council knows, I have asked Shelley and Warren, I sent them a letter after last Tuesday's meeting, asking them to take a look at possibly limiting the number of public hearings. And this is just my opinion, but if it takes longer to get something to a public hearing because of time constraints, so be it. That's just my opinion. But I just hate to see volunteer boards like that, and staff, spend that much time for public hearings, especially if, and a couple of them were contentious. And that's, that's an extreme amount of time and impact on these people. So just so you know, I've asked them to look at that and see what they may be able to come up with to try to shorten the number of public hearings at a particular meeting. So they'll come back with information on that. Number two, I know Shelley and I were talking, we're seeing a lot of requests on Highway 41. And as was said earlier, Highway 41 is behind schedule. You know, they leapfrog Post Falls to get to Rathrum because of right-of-way acqui, et cetera, et cetera. It's coming together. But would council want staff to take a look at, and Shelley, you worded it better than I will, but possibly limiting annexations along 41 until 41 is improved? Or what are the other options that we could do to?
So yes, we could put an agenda item on for the next agenda, if you'd like to have a discussion talking about limiting the number of annexation applications until such a time that Highway 41 is improved. And Warren can, if I need to clarify on that, you know, he's here to back me up on it, so.
Yeah, we can, you, as we've talked about in various trainings over the years, that annexations are a legislative matter, unlike our quasi-judicial matters like zoning, special use permits. So you can say, we're not going to annex for a period of time in a given location. That's doable. I think if it's something you want to have a discussion about and something you, we need to put that on agenda, because it's not an action item for tonight. So if you want to do that, we can put it on a, on the next agenda, the agenda after that, to have that discussion.
Warren, for clarification, that is not a moratorium.
Not a moratorium, that's a different.
I just wanted to get that out.
It's, it's a, typically, moratoriums, you're looking at quasi-judicial hearings. This is a legislative matter.
Good. Counsel, is that something you'd like to?
Yeah, I spoke, I talked to Warren about this about a month ago. So I think that was something I would, would support.
Yeah, it just doesn't hurt to discuss it, for sure.
Yeah. All right. I'm open to the discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. Linda, you all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So yeah, why don't you bring it back for discussion purposes? I think that's all I have. So council comments. Al, go ahead.
I'd just like to thank the gentlemen that came today, tonight, and spoke on whatever. I certainly encourage input from the citizens. Now, you know, Mr. Burns brought up the public notice. I'm in your court on that one. I agree with a lot of the things you said, and I appreciate Warren clarifying a lot of that. I love the fact that we can get people engaged. Mr. Flowers has brought up several different ideas over the years. But I don't know what it takes to get people here to speak their mind and say what they want to say. So I encourage you to come and speak. And thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight, as you have in the past too, in bringing things to us.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to say something, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would like to publicly thank Mike Patrick, the editor of the Coeur d'Alene Press, for his letter, "Poison is a Poor Cure for Growth Anxiety." If you haven't read it, it's a good read. It's short. And I would also like to invite some positive people in Post Falls, and I know there's tens of thousands of you now, to come to our city council meetings too. We would love to see you here. So thank you.
Thank you. We do not need an executive session tonight?
We do not, sir.
Next meeting, next motion is?
Jurn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Jurn, thank you.